To the additional height, he was granted 10 stories to 30 stories. So no decision has been made, but in the meantime, you know, he's not going to continue construction. So we will see if there's an opportunity to reach some consensus on happening. If that happens, it'll have to be a co-change, which will come back to this board and the city can. Otherwise, we'll wait and see what happens post COVID-19 and see what that does to the market. It's a big question mark right now.
Isn't it though? Have you guys in your professional?
Mr. Manz?
Yes, sir.
The mayor is done, so whenever you're ready to start.
All right, do we need to give them a warning that we're ready to begin in just a short while?
Yeah, just a few, just a few second warning, please.
Should I give it? Or have you just given?
That'd be great.
Okay, all right. A 30-second warning before we commence. And I wish I had had a second hand when I made that statement.
Okay, all good.
All right, thank you so much. I would like to call to order the June 16, 2020 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Eva Manz.
Present.
Pat McLeod.
Here.
Peter Pivko.
Here.
Deborah Ray.
Deborah, you're on mute. If you could unmute yourself to say you're present. Here, I'm gonna think, can I? No, I can't. I know. Deborah, can you hear us? There you go.
Left-hand corner, Deborah.
There you go. You're just, okay, present.
I'm phrase Keller Dell.
Here.
Mark Pateman.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
That holds.
Present.
All right, I've been asked to read a statement to the record and let the public know. So bear with me. It's just three pages long. Pursuant to Executive Order 2069 issued by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March 20, 2020, and Mayor Keith A. James's Executive Order Number 202005 issued on April 2, 2020, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting hearings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April 14, 2020, Mayor Keith A. James issued Executive Order 202009, which specifically provides the rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi-judicial hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this public hearing, it is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission chambers located at City Center 401 Clemata Street on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including WPBTB-18, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following in the City Center Flagler Gallery, or dialing 561-320-65451 and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes, or sending an email or video recording to pbpubliccomment@wpb.org. So let me give that again. PBB, PB Public Comment, one word, at wpb.org, or completing the online public comment form at www.wpb.org-publiccomments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the Q&amp;A or raise hand features. Anyone accessing just the Zoom video using their phone may raise a hand by pressing star nine. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you are providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will be sworn in. The swearing-in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you are about to provide testimony and were not sworn in, please be sure to indicate such and be sworn before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. For the members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable and you may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting. Okay, that was the state. Next order of business is approval of the May 19, 2020 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them?
Yes.
If so, may I have a motion for approval?
Motion, Mr. Sherr.
Looking for a second?
One second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those of favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, you oppose? No, you're saying aye, Chris, right? Okay. Any opposed, and the motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. There are no cases that commit to the commission first Angela Van Pannen and Zonin administered. Go back up. But there are no cases that the City Commission heard between your May and your June meeting. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions of staff? All right, next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, which I have none, other than that interesting three-page statement I read to you earlier, which then brings us to the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Does anyone have anything to report? Okay, we then move to the public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing-in of the speakers. Would anyone who plans, I'm sorry? Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please raise your right hand and answer the question. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none, planning board cases, of which there are none, which then brings us to the code revision cases, and we turn to case numbers 1858 and 1858A.
Good evening, board members. Anna Maria Aponte, City Urban Designer, for the record. I'm gonna share my screen right now so we can start the presentation. Thank you very much. We're gonna present today Planning Board Case 1858 and 1858A. It's a city-initiated request for a tax amendment to the downtown master plan element of the comprehensive plan, Policy 1.1, Point 1, and 3.1.3. And also, Planning Board Case 1858A, a tax amendment to Chapter 94 of the Sonine Land Development Regulations, Article 4, Section 94, 119, Quadro Business District, Section 94, 128, Northwest Neighborhood District, Section 94, 131, Incentive Programs, Section 94, 133, Special District Incentives, Table 4-45, Building Requirements for Quadro Business District 5 to 15, Story Receiving Site, Table 4-46, Building Requirements for Quadro Business District 3 to 15, Story Receiving Sites, and Figure 4-35, PDR Sending and Receiving Sites, and creating a new Table 4-58A, Building Requirements for Northwest District 3 to 8, Story Receiving Sites. The proposed amendments intend to promote the redevelopment of the Rosemary Corridor within the Northwest District and the Banyan Corridor within the Quadro Businesses. In recent years, the city and the CRA have been actively working on the redevelopment strategies for the Northwest Neighborhood. Several public-initiated projects are moving forward. As you probably know, projects like the renovation of the Sunset Lounge and the construction of the Heart and Soul Park are way on their way and will be completed soon. But due to the public investment recently undergoing in the Northwest Neighborhood, private interest in the neighborhood is increasing, especially on the areas on the southeast portion of the neighborhood that is in proximity with the core of the downtown. Our tracts of land that are currently available for the redevelopment on the neighborhood are spurring more interest from the developers. Considering the impacts of redevelopment of these parcels will have in the neighborhood, the city has decided to retain the services of the Stolon Lee Company, again, to evaluate the current regulation and make recommendations for the future development of this area. The idea is to ensure that the future development is adequate for the neighborhood and the new projects do not negatively impact the scale of the historic district. The Stolon Lee Inc. is an architecture and urban planning firm that has worked in the community before. In 2002, the firm developed the Northwest Neighborhood Strategic Development Plan that produced recommendations about how to move ahead with the redevelopment of the district. The recommendations have since then guided the cities and the CRA actions in the community. The new study that it was, for which the Stolon Lee Group was retained, will focus only on the target area that I mentioned, so the south boundary of the neighborhood and the Rosemary Corridor. And with having said this, I'm gonna introduce, I want to introduce Mr. David Lee is the principal of the firm, and Larry Bluestone, the project manager, and they're gonna explain to you all their findings and their recommendations for the target area. I'm gonna. Now. Change the screens and. Good. How do we do that? Give me one second.
You'll have to do new share and bring up your others.
There, yes. New share.
There you go.
Mr. Lee?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Clearly, that was a pre-COVID photograph. I forgot about the days when you could walk around like that. We are happy to have a chance to present our work. We've been working pretty intensely with Anna Maria and her staff and others over the last couple of months now, and it's been a pleasure to do it. I will have to admit, though, I missed at least one trip to West Palm Beach in the middle of the winter. But since I'm a skier, I guess it wasn't all bad. However, as Anna Maria has mentioned, we had worked in the neighborhood a number of years ago and were very pleasantly surprised when we were asked to come back and kind of update some of that work and address some of the new pressures, development pressures in a good way, economic development pressures, as the downtown continues to evolve on the east and southern border of the historic Northwest Neighborhood. Basically, our charge has been to help the neighbors, as well as the staff, visualize what's possible under current roles, zoning rules. And then, based on that analysis, recommend new rules and guidelines to make sure that the scale of what is being built is as compatible as possible with the historic fabric of the neighborhood. The thing is, we want to make sure that we find a balance in terms of what is a viable, economically viable proposition, particularly since the benefits include more affordable housing and economic development in the neighborhood. Next, please. It is kind of a mixed bag in a way in that it overlaps the corridors that we're looking at, Rosemary and Banyan. Also, our cheek by jowl, and in some cases actually go over the historic boundaries of the neighborhood, just in small ways. But you can see the sort of blue line on the right there shows the historic boundaries, and then you can see the red dotted line where some of those things come in immediate proximity. Next. Development brings both challenges and opportunities, and it's all on the screen for you to see. But obviously, the first challenge is to make sure that the development doesn't simply overwhelm the neighborhood. Clearly, more economic development and, in some cases, mixed income is going to mean there are going to be some rising rents, and that's going to result in some displacement. But it's certainly been my experience around the country that as neighborhoods improve, many people are willing to pay more to be in those neighborhoods if they think it's really going to be a safer, more interesting place to be. Obviously, the historic fabric is important, and with new development, there is the opportunity, and the raison d'etre really, to invest in retaining and improving historic structures, which in some cases are not in great, great shape. Always, of course, the question, the vettin war always is increased parking. That sort of, it just comes with the territory, and every effort is made to make sure that parking is minimized. But realistically, parking is going to come with new development. On the other hand, there are a number of opportunities. As the neighbors are interested as well, it's bringing the chance for local businesses to get involved and to have more patrons, literally more foot traffic, which creates more opportunities. And again, the local residents and businesspeople want to have a chance to be involved in that. The opportunity for increased affordable housing is palpable and a good thing. Again, based on the design guidelines and simply having more people in the neighborhood, it's going to create more lively and active streets and active commercial streets. And with people coming and going, that always increases safety. Through a variety of techniques, it also creates the opportunity to make improvements to the parks in the neighborhood, as well as the streets. And when carefully, that's where I want, carefully crafted, there are opportunities to make sure that everyone gets to participate in the expansion of the economy. And of course, there's increased real estate values for property owners, which benefits those who've owned property out there for a long time and are pleased to see their properties become more valuable. Next. This is a rich area in its history, from its earliest days, but certainly its heydays in the 40s, 50s, and 60s. It has been a real major source of pride and for the black community in the West Palm Beach area. And they had a good time there at the Sunset Lounge. And on the left there, you've seen a dance there, and I zoomed in pretty closely. I think that's Count Basie's band on the balcony there. So that must have been quite a night. Next. As was mentioned, we've worked on some plans, the planning we did back in 2002, but there have been many others. Next. This Northwest Rising is a very comprehensive report. And of course, the more recent work on Northwest Rosemary is very exciting as well. Next. The neighborhood is well positioned relative to burgeoning downtown in West Palm Beach and with Rosemary Square and Clemata Street, which was in its almost infancy when we were there in 2002. There are really lively destination points now. Next. There are investments being made in the neighborhood, both in terms of current residents, but also the city has a number of initiatives that are restoring some of the historically important buildings, but those that are somewhat in bad shape. But also, the churches have been really a pillar in the community, and there are several spectacular church facilities in the neighborhood as well. Next. There are a number of active businesses in the area, and there are some fairly substantial new development opportunities, such as this one along Rosemary Street on the east side. Next. This, again, just points out the historic district, and some of the buildings are in the historic district. Next. And then, there have been a number of development proposals, which in part are the reason we're actually doing the study right now. And some are approved already, others are pending approval. But the principal ones are the Hinge Block, the Grand, Flagler Station, and the Banyan Residences. Next. The Hinge Block was originally proposed to be two hotels, as well as housing. Given the economy, they've scaled back for the moment, and they are just planning on one hotel right now. Next. 5550 Banyan has been approved, and that work is on its way. Next. Flagler Station is still being refined back and forth. I think it's generally been approved. In the last meeting, at least the Downtown Action Committee was generally in favor of that, and I think voted in favor of it, subject to further work and involvement with the urban design staff. Next. The Grand has not yet been approved, and a lot of our effort working with the city staff has been to look at how it may be improved to be a better fit with the neighborhood. Next. And again, there are a number of important city initiatives. We've already spoken a bit about the Sunset Lounge. And right opposite the lounge, based in part on our study back in 2002. Next. The park, the Heart and Soul Park, is going to bring new open space to the community. Next. The Dancing to the Sunset is a wonderful idea to revitalize Rosemary Avenue with art and streetscape improvements, lighting, a number of really nice urban design interventions. Next. There is also underway planning for the Banyan Street Quarter to make it a real boulevard, as opposed to kind of just a fast street from one side of town to the other. There are going to be some lovely improvements to that, and it will be a real seam between the Northwest Neighborhood and downtown, as opposed to a barrier. Next. Another interesting proposition is the Linear Park. It's being proposed on some of, about a block of abandoned railway right north of Banyan. Next. Oops. What happened to the pictures?
I guess her presentation was done. You didn't know it.
Okay, well, actually, there's more to come. But if you guys are, if you guys are okay, I'm okay.
No.
Anna, Anna, you still there? Yeah.
I don't, I don't see Anna Marie.
Yeah, I think that's what happened. She, we lost her.
She's, she's just claiming anything to do with this project evidently. She bailed on you. Does anyone else have access to that presentation? Rick or John?
Let me, let's see if I have it. Let me go back to my desktop.
I can run upstairs.
I think it's included in our package. If you want to go to the end, it's a PDF file.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
She may be able to reboot. I'm sure she's trying.
Do you, sir, have that presentation that you could share from your computer?
I don't think I have it on this one, and I'll probably screw it up if I try to do that.
Understood, understood. Let's see, Rick may have it. Let's give him a moment. And Peter, if you could pull it up.
It's part of the package that Hope sent.
Yeah.
I think it's only part of it. I don't think it's a full-on, while we're being presented, but yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was the whole report.
Wes?
He lost power and she's rebooting.
Yeah, she's coming. She lost power out in the lobby for some strange reason.
Yeah.
She's unplugged her.
She's coming.
Some strange reason. Pulled the plug. I never miss.
Hey, Kevin, can you turn on your light? Oh, no. I guess we got all the lights from here. Can you turn on the lights that are here?
We need air traffic control again.
Well, I'm always intrigued every time I see that Progressive commercial where everybody's dropping off and trying to figure it out.
Right.
Thanks.
I'm gonna myself.
I see at least we're not the only.
Yeah.
Is Alonso still here?
Because he, he's also one that might have to do. I think it's been a big deal for us to try to.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah. Trying to figure out how, not Darth Vader here, but. I'm gonna get the lighting right.
Peter, I'm just pulling up now. Do you have the page number that started on? Do you know offhand?
It just, yeah, it just, okay.
Oh, she's back.
She's back, okay, because I can pull it up if we need it. So Anna Marie, did you have a nice little break?
Thank you. Not very nice, very stressful, though. We're back, so. Here, sorry about that.
All right, technical difficulties.
But that's our 19. Is it her 19? Okay. Anna Marie, we think we're at page 19.
Okay.
You're probably at around slide 15, I'm guessing, Anna.
I cannot see the slides, but I think.
That's it, that was. No, keep going. Keep going.
Keep going.
Here.
Right, right, yes.
We did, okay.
Yeah, and I was merely just adding to the number of initiatives that the city is engaged in, including the Linear Park along a piece of abandoned railway just north of Banyan. Next. And then, there's some scattered site shotgun housing that's being proposed out in the area. It's gonna be very nice and very much in scale with the rest of the fabric in the historic district. Next. And as I mentioned earlier, another historic structures are literally being shored up and redeveloped with part of the city's programs. Next. Other gestures that are being pursued include extending the street fabric throughout the neighborhood. I guess, right there. Extending some of the streets to make better connectivity through and across the neighborhood. Next.
You see, it goes down a little bit.
And then, there are a series of parcels that are owned by the county and, I guess, the state, and they are not subject to city zoning requirements, but they are possible development parcels in the future and probably will engage with the city and try to follow city guidelines. There are also a series of parcels that, because of environmental remediation challenges, will probably be as many as 10 years before they are fully developed. Those are the ones in purple there. Next. And zoning, of course, we don't have to tell you guys. You know all about zoning, so we can go faster with this part. Next. Just the kinds of things, of course, that zoning regulates. Next. And the whole idea of creating incentives when certain qualifications are met, such as community benefits or affordable housing. Next. And it's clearly a pattern throughout the city. As you look on the right, there are quite a number of these bonus and incentive districts that are being developed throughout the city. And this just adds to a pattern that's already proceeding. Next. Okay, so I'm gonna turn this over to my colleague, Larry Bustone.
Hello, how are you?
Good, well, thank you.
This the next section of the PowerPoint is is a visualization section where we were working with Anna Marie and her colleagues and the stakeholders in the neighborhood to illustrate what could be developed under current zoning, so they could get a sense of what they might see if the zoning remained as it currently is. Next. So we started out testing if if parcels were undeveloped parcels now were redeveloped under current zoning. So the buildings in green are visualizations of what could be built under existing zoning. On the right side, you're looking at the east side of Rosemary and along the bottom, you're looking at development that could be built under existing zoning along Banyon, Second and Third. So we we applied all the rules setbacks, open space, amount of parking, height, and the next slide will start showing what we got under existing zoning. So we just these are all just four different viewpoints. The upper left is is from along Banyon. The lower left is looking from the northwest back towards Rosemary and Banyon. And then the two on the right are simply a little close ups. If we look at the upper left, what is allowed along Banyon now under base zoning is only is only three stories. And as you go a little further north to Third Street, it's only two stories. What you see on the right along the east side of Rosemary is under current zoning. It allows up to eight stories, but then it must step down to five stories in height as it actually reaches the Rosemary right of way edge. And I think you can see that on these drawings. So this is what could be built under base zoning if all these landowners decided to proceed. Next. So now we wanted to look at what could be developed if landowners and developers chose to use the existing incentive districts. Next. So on this plan, you'll see a number of incentive districts. NWD three through four, the brown colored districts along the west side of Rosemary currently in place. And then along Banyon between Banyon and Second, we have two different incentive districts, QBD three through fifteen, which allows now up to fifteen stories. And then right along Rosemary and Banyon, we have a QBD five through fifteen. So these are all the existing incentives. Now we want to take a look at what could be built under those. Next. So again, we tested what could be built under these rules, which allow more height and density than the base zoning. Here is the plan. Let's take a look at the next slide at the three D view. So now what we're seeing, again, four different views. The upper left again is along Banyon. And what can be built along Banyon is up to fifteen stories. Now, not all of those buildings are shown up to fifteen stories because we hit limitations, given certain parcel sizes, setbacks, parking required, but you can go up to fifteen stories. And I think when you look at the image on the lower left and look back towards Banyon, you'll see some pretty high buildings built there, very close to the low scale houses in the existing historic district. If you look at that same lower left drawing, the yellow building sort of on the diagonal left side are what can be built along Rosemary, four stories high on Rosemary, and they step down to three stories as they approach the immediate neighborhood edge. So these are views of what could be built if, again, developers chose to take advantage of the incentive zones. Next. So now we just want to show you a total amount of development of what if all these parcels were developed, both under existing zoning and where possible, under the incentive zoning. So we'll see a combined picture here. Next. So here is the plan. The green again is what can be done under existing where there are no incentive districts that apply. And the yellow are what could be built under incentive. So we'll see a combined view. Next. And ultimately, what you're seeing here is what could be built if all the property owners just decided to redevelop. And I think what you're seeing, and I'll summarize here, but we'll get to this in a minute, along Banyon, you see a pretty high row of buildings. Along Rosemary, both existing on the east side and the incentive on the west side of Rosemary have been established to kind of do a very nice step down in scale from the busy quarter of Rosemary, our hope to be busy quarter, to the scale of the lower scale historic neighborhoods. Next. So this on the left side, we're just doing a comparison. Here's what could be built if everything were done under base zoning in green. And on the right, what could be done if both the base zoning and the incentive zoning were utilized? And you can see again quite a difference in scale once the incentive zones are taken advantage of. Next. So lessons learned from the visualizations we just saw. Next. So again, here's maybe a more closer view of the existing zoning. You again, you'll see along Banyon, no more than three stories along Third Street, no more than two stories. And again, if you look up along Rosemary, you get some higher buildings up to eight stories, but they nicely skip step down to five as you actually come to Rosemary Avenue. Next. So what are the lessons learned? The the build out that can happen under base zoning is largely compatible in scale and height with the existing historic neighborhood and won't overshadow it. On the east side of Rosemary, where you saw those eight story buildings stepping down to five, there is a lot of new development that can happen there. For example, the Hinge Block that we discussed earlier with the Indigo Hotel being the first phase. But again, because of the step down, it starts respecting the existing scale of the neighborhood. On number three there, the west side of Rosemary, the incentive zones there, NWD three through four, allow four stories on Rosemary and they step down to three as you immediately join the neighborhood. So in general, base zoning does not overwhelm the neighborhood. And it provides, in some cases at least, enough encouragement to do new development, but not along Banyon. Next. So now lessons learned about the existing incentive zoning. I think the main lesson that least we took away with and we and we discussed this with city staff and then is that the development that could be allowed along Banyon up to Second, again, up to fifteen stories, is just too much and too high immediately adjacent to the neighborhood. On the other hand, the incentive zones along the west side of Rosemary scale down nicely and meet the neighborhood in a very gentle way. Next. So lessons learned. Along Banyon, the height of fifteen stories is, we think, is too high. And we think actually creates a wall between Banyon and the northwest neighborhood. And therefore, we suggest that this fifteen story allowed height be lowered. Along Rosemary, particularly the west side where the incentive districts are, because it scales down nicely from four stories to three stories, we think as it is now drafted, it's doing it's doing a very good job and will encourage new development that is compatible with the neighborhood. Next. So based on these observations, here's our recommendations. Next. So in summary, we think that the principles of the of the revised incentive districts should be always to step down in height as you approach the existing neighborhood fabric of one and two story homes. So that as you meet the edges of the existing neighborhood, you are no taller than three to five stories. So the stepping down principle is a key one. However, the incentives have to allow enough development to occur to encourage developers and property owners to develop. Then, as another principle, some new developments may suggest parking structures as a part of their development. And we think it's important that the exteriors of those parking structures, particularly if they are along streets, be masked and disguised and sometimes with liner housing, so they're they're not something that's incompatible with the residential neighborhood. And then finally, along Banyon and Rosemary, we really encourage active uses with hopefully as much retail as can be put there to encourage those streets to become new active commercial streets. Next. So these, this is a map of what the incentive zoning district map we're suggesting look like. Up along the right, you'll see the NWD three to four district. That's again where it scales from four story to three stories. That is now on the books. We think it is very good as it is now laid out and it should be retained. If you go immediately just below that, you'll see a new NWD three through eight district. That incentive district does not exist now, and we're recommending that it be designated as a new TDR site. And we're suggesting that it scales down from eight stories, but only down to three stories along Third Street and three stories along Sappidilla, where that block meets the neighborhood. This is the block, as you may know, where the the grand apartments are being proposed. Then along the the lower edge of the plan, you'll see revised incentive districts, QBD five through ten and QBD eight through ten. Again, these under current incentives are allowed to go up to fifteen. We're recommending that they go no taller than ten stories. And furthermore, under the QBD five through ten, the part of that district that adjoins Second Street, where the existing neighborhood houses are right across Second Street, we suggest that it go no more than five stories. So again, it's this principle of stepping down from ten stories to five stories. Next. So here is a an illustration of what these new districts may look like. On Banyon, you can go up as far as ten stories, but when you go to the second street side of this incentive district, it must step down to five stories that meets the neighborhood. I'll I'll jump up to Rosemary again on the northern, north of Third Street on Rosemary. Again, you see the existing incentive districts, four stories stepping down to three. Again, we think that works very well. And then on that a block at the corner between Sappidilla and Rosemary and between Banyon and Second and Third, we're recommending a little higher height. It it's sort of the the knuckle between the northwest neighborhood meeting the downtown, both to the east and south. And even though we're keeping no more than ten stories on Rosemary, we think I'm sorry, on Banyon, we think it can support up to eight stories. One or two blocks inland, if you will, up to up to almost Third Street. So this is the scale of what could be done if developers choose to use these incentive districts. Next. Again, this is a different view looking from the northwest. If you look back towards Banyon, you can see the up to ten story buildings along Banyon, but you see that it steps down to much lower height, five stories along Second Street where it meets the existing neighborhood. And again, you see that knuckle at the corner of Rosemary and Banyon where we think we can allow a little more height. Next. This is simply another view. We're looking right from the corner of Rosemary and Banyon, sort of looking northwest at this point. Next. And this is a block we're looking in this case southeast. This is where the the grand project is being proposed. In the foreground is Third Street and on the right hand side is Sappidilla. And you can see the eight story buildings on this block and the eight ten story buildings behind it, which are on Banyon. But then you'll notice right along Third Street in the foreground in Sappidilla on the right, the scale has to come down to three stories to meet the existing neighborhood. We think that can work pretty well as a good transition. Next. The next several slides are simply showing the same thing except through cross sections. So on this map, you'll see a cross section through Rosemary. Then on the lower parts of the drawing, you'll see a cross section B between Banyon and Second and cross section C between Banyon and Third. So let's take a look at those. So this is cross section A. In the middle there, where you see the palm trees, that's Rosemary. On the right is North Railroad Avenue. The green is what can be done under the existing base district. And as you can see, it steps down from eight stories but must step down to five on Rosemary. Then on the west side of Rosemary is the new is the incentive district now in place, NWD four through three. Four stories on Rosemary steps down to three stories as it joins the neighborhood. Then you see a typical house on the very left. So we think the scale, it works very well in this stepped down pattern. Next. This is cross section B. As you can see, Banyon on the right. The Linear Park, that's that railroad right of way Linear Park, which will be built mid block between Banyon and Second and then Second Street on the left. And again, you see the principle here of letting new development rise to ten stories in Banyon, but as it meets the neighborhood at Second Street, it must step down to five stories. Next. And then this was cross section C, Banyon on the right, now Second Street in the middle and Third Street. We're taking it all the way to Third Street in this section, so we're covering two blocks. So again, starting on Banyon, ten stories on that knuckle block, as I refer to it, we took it down to eight stories. And then on the left there, between Second and Third is where the grand is being proposed. So we're suggesting up to eight stories, but again, it must drop to three stories along Third and Sappidilla. Next. This is an eye level view. We're standing at the corner of Rosemary and Third. On the left, you see what could be built on that block that is being proposed by the grand. Once again, you see up to eight stories, but if you look down the block on Third Street, you'll see that only three story buildings are allowed to meet the existing neighborhood. Next. And this is simply another view of that block. Sappidilla on the right and Third Street on the left. And if you look down both Third Street and Sappidilla, you'll see that the buildings are no more than three stories high. But in the background, you can see rising up behind them eight to ten stories. So next. So this, we won't go into this. When we met with the community, we wanted to just point out a number of the incentive programs, both available for businesses in the in the neighborhood and for housing investment and neighborhood beautification. So we listed these existing city programs that could be utilized within within the northwest or adjacent to the northwest neighborhood. Next. So that is it on our part and we're open for questions.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I have this a second part of the presentation that will include the technical part of the proposed amendments. If you want, if the board wants, we can have questions for the consultants at this point or you want to wait until.
How much longer will you need to complete your presentation?
It's probably ten minutes.
Yeah, why don't you finish your presentation and and then we'll open up for questions.
Okay, so give me a few seconds. I'm gonna open. Stop sharing. I'm gonna open the presentation.
Or you can always unplug it, whatever your preference is.
What is it? Yes.
And you can just go to slideshow and then just hit the page number and enter.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that. There you go. Okay, so this part of the presentation, after the presentation that is solely did for us, thank you very much, I'm gonna just go over the proposed changes to the zoning and land development regulations on the comprehensive plan that staff is proposing based on the recommendations from the solely study. The first group are changes to the comprehensive plan. There are policy 1.1.1 and just adding some language to reference the Northwest Neighborhood Strategic Development Plan update, that is the solely updated report. And then policy 3.1.3 will add some language to clarify the way the tables and figures describe the information and update the maximum development capacity table and the incentive areas figure to reflect the desired. So these are the two, the table DMP1, that includes the maximum development capacity allowed in each of the districts with base and incentive, and also the maximum height allowed for each of those sub-districts on the base and the incentive. So I highlighted in yellow the changes. So you see Quadrille Business District Five will allow an increase in FAR for the incentive and also the height was modified from the 15 to 10. These tables in the comprehensive plan, so we have to amend it in there. And also DMP Figure Three, that includes the incentive areas, needs to also amend the two incentive districts along Quadrille and add the incentive district on the new proposed incentive district for the NW three to eight. These two things are gonna, are refined, it's on the land development regulations, but they are included in the comprehensive plan, but they need to be amended. So the second part of the proposed amendments are the detailed changes on the zoning and land development regulations. And they are divided basically in three groups. The first one is the revised incentives provided for the Quadrille Business District Three and the Quadrille Business District Five. The second one are the proposed language for the new incentive called Northwest District Three to Eight. And the third one is to introduce some language to allow pedestrian passageways as a connection for required future right-of-way, as indicated in the Figure Four of the zoning act. And I will explain that in detail. So the first set of changes is, as I mentioned, the revised incentive district along Banyan Boulevard. We have right now the Quadrille Business District Three, that is the block between Sappidilla and Tamarine Second and Banyan, that currently has as a base, as it was explained by Mr. Lu Stone, an FAR of one and a maximum height of three stories. That is a very low development capacity, but based on what we had currently as an incentive, that area is allowed under the Quadrille Business District Three to Fifteen to increase the FAR to a maximum of 3.75 and increase its height to a maximum of 15 stories. So what we are proposing right now is to modify that incentive and assign different FARs depending of the frontage of the property. So the properties along Second Street that are closer to the neighborhood, the FAR allowed with the incentive will be lower from 3.75 to 2.75. And the properties in Banyan will be allowed to have a higher FAR of four. The same way, the height allowed for this incentive will be tailored to, according to the location of the property. So along Second Street, the height will come down from the 15 stories allowed previously to five stories. And along Banyan Boulevard will be allowed from the 15 stories previously allowed to the 10 stories. So it is, as you see, it is an incentive that is more tailored to accommodate the step down towards the neighborhood as Mr. Lee and Lu Stone. This is just a graphic. You saw this session just a few minutes ago. I just wanted to show you over it, what is currently allowed. So the dotted line is what is currently allowed and the incentive. So you see the comparison, how the height is now being lowered. The other incentive district along Banyan Boulevard is the Quadrille Business District Three and Five, that is the block between Sappidilla and Rosemary, Banyan Boulevard and Second. This block is divided in two different incentives that allowed one FAR and three stories for the QBD Three, but the portion of the properties along Rosemary were allowed right now as a base, an FAR of 2.75 and a maximum height of five. The incentive allows the same on the other block at 3.75 and 15 stories. So in a similar way, we are proposing to modify this incentive, group the two incentives under one incentive, call Quadrille Business District Eight to Ten, and also adjust the FAR sound height according to the frontage where the properties are. Along Second Street, the FAR will be maintained at 3.75, but the height will be allowed to eight stories. Along Banyan Boulevard, the FAR will be increased a little bit to 4.5, but the FAR, the height will be lowered to 15. In a similar way, I want to show you this comparison. This is what is proposed in terms of the section for the height. And this is what it was, what is currently allowed. So you can see the 15 stories, there were some setbacks along Second Street to bring the building down. But the setback was only 50 feet in, so the 15-story building was still overpowering the scale of the neighborhood. And that's why we wanted to... These are the new tables that are being proposed for each of these new incentive areas or revised incentive areas that include all the details and the regulations for them. And then the second amendment that we are proposing is in reference to the new incentive district at Rosemary Avenue and Third Street. This incentive district is, it's a new one, that area, that block in particular, has, does not have currently any incentive area, and it's split in three different zoning designations. The properties along Third Street are right now part of the single-family or the more, the small-scale development of the single-family neighborhood that allow only a 0.65 FAR and a maximum height of 32 feet. The Second Street allows the slightly higher FAR of one and two stories. And the properties along Rosemary allow a 2.75 FAR and five stories. Mentioned, no incentives are allowed during that, this block. And what we are proposing is actually create a new incentive that will basically promote the redevelopment of this block that is primarily vacant and which we have some interest from the private sector to develop. The new district is, will be called Northwest District Three to Eight and allow an additional FAR, or that the FAR will be allowed to increase to a maximum of 2.75. But again, the height will be tailored according with the location. So along Third Street and Sappidilla, maximum height permitted will be three stories. But along Rosemary Avenue and Second Street, the height will be allowed to go up to eight stories. And this is what is proposed, and this is a comparison of what it is allowed right now. These are what is allowed on the Third Street and Second Street. And then these five stories, that is the line over that, is what is allowed along Rosemary Avenue. So I just want to give you an idea of how it goes. So that is the new district. The new district, it's also proposed as workforce housing incentive only. So basically, for a project to, in order for a project to use this incentive, they will have to provide workforce housing. So the proposal states that the project has to provide at least 33% of the total units, the tenants with income up to 100% of the AMI, and an additional 10% of the units for tenants with an income between 101 and 120 of the AMI. So this table that I'm showing here on screen shows what will be the price under the current 2020 numbers for area median income, what would be the prices for rental for those units. So you can see, for an 80% AMI studio, will be $1,230. And if we compare with the market rate for those, the same-sized units right now of other buildings within downtown, and we got these prices a couple of weeks ago from the Rodstone City Center, from the Alexander and those new residential buildings, you can see the comparison. So for a studio, the current market brand is somewhere between 180% of the AMI. For the higher you go and the larger the size of the unit, the prices go above the 120. So, but the idea is to be able to provide some units for these income levels. And that means that this incentive is only available for those projects that provide this workforce housing. In order to also utilize the incentive, the project shall remain workforce housing for 15 years after the final CO is granted. The units shall match the start of finishes of the market rate units. It cannot be closer or segregated from the market rate. The unit mix also has to match the market rate unit mix. So if they have, I don't know, 30% are studios and 30% are one-bedroom, the workforce housing units have to match also the same rate now. And affordability controls will be handled through a development agreement with the city. In exchange for the workforce housing units, the city will offer to the developer the TDRs needed for the project at no cost. That is the main proposal. Then the third amendment is minor change that we are proposing in response to the project, the Flagler Station project that, you don't see, but it was recently approved by the Downtown Action Committee, and is to modify some specific language in the zoning code in reference to new right-of-ways. You see in the screen, the zoning act of Figure Four, the street classification, designates each of the cities in the downtown between avenues, primary pedestrian streets, secondary streets, or residential. And that is what determines the setback requirements for each of the properties. We also have, in this map, indicated some dotted lines. And those dotted lines are basically specified to indicate future right-of-ways. What we want to do is to allow flexibility to the city to determine if these future right-of-ways should be full streets for vehicular use, or they can be also passageways. In the case of the extension of Douglas, that is coming from the Northwest Neighborhood, the original intention was to fully connect the two streets going to Banyan. But after some study, and even the mobility study determined that it will be okay to have it just a pedestrian connection instead of having a publicular street to go into Banyan. So the language that we're proposing is just to allow the city that flexibility. And when it's appropriate, we can determine if the future right-of-way shall be a full street or a pedestrian passageway. That, it's basically our proposal. Staff recommends approval for planning board cases 1858 based on the finding that the amendment meets the requirement of Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and it is consistent with all the elements of the city's comprehensive plan. Staff also recommends approval for a planning board case 1858A based upon the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all the amendment standards found in Section 9432 of the zoning and land development regulations. The proposed amendments were presented to the Downtown Action Committee last June 10, and they were approved seven zero, and they will be presented to the City Commission on July 13. After the City Commission's hearing, the amendments to the comprehensive plan will be transferred to the state for review. That concludes the staff presentation. Mr. Chair?
Okay, can you stop the sharing for just a moment? I'm so sorry. So we can see each other now. Thank you for that. Just one quick question before I open up to the board for other questions. I was trying to follow all your technical things, but just to be clear, those were designed to implement the recommendations of the consultants. Is that correct? So it's consistent with it? There's, okay, all right.
So your staff report includes all the document that was prepared by Mr. Lee. So it has all their study, their analysis and their recommendations. So they, what we're doing in implementing those recommendations.
I understand. Okay, let me open up to the board. Questions of staff, questions of our consultants. And I just remind you, many of you are on mute, and if you wish to ask a question, you need to unmute. Any questions?
I have a question, Steve.
Go ahead, Peter.
First, I'll have to compliment you on the extensive study that you've undertaken. I think particularly for, as members, I think the 3D imaging is so important to try and visualize what would be built there in the future. My question was, there are certain areas that are being, I guess you can call it downzone from 15 down to 10. Have you had any pushback from the property owners in that respect?
No, we have not. I talked with the property owner. The only property owner that have contacted us is the, one of the property owners on Banyan. In reality, this is the incentive, so the city has the ability to modify those incentives at any time without having any legal issues with that. And also, the other thing to make a note of is we're reducing the height, but we're increasing, in particular for the Banyan One, the FAR. So we're not willing to reduce the development capacity. We're just restricting on the height.
And Anna mentioned that the Flagler Station, I mean, it eight stories. So even with the downgrade in the height, they're still proposing only eight stories.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, the Flagler Station project that was just approved by the board last week, they have right now 15 stories and 3.75 FAR. They came in with an eight-story project and their FAR is 2.75 around it. So they're utilizing the full capacity that is allowed with incentive.
You also, I guess, forgot to mention, is probably gonna be the safest neighborhood in all the city with the police department across the street and the US Marshals office across the street.
All right, thank you, Peter. Scott, do you have a question? You're muted on, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious, has there been any, what outreach was done to people in the neighborhood in the historic Northwest regarding these changes? And I mean, did anyone voice any opinions? Were there any charrettes or anything done?
Yes, we, the project that started, we hired Mr. Lee in December last year. So we started working in January. On January 27, we did the first stakeholder meeting. It was a target stakeholder meeting, so a small group of residents from the neighborhood. Mr. Lee and his team came down and met with them and discussed, kind of, before going ahead with the project, they discussed their general concerns at what could be the outcomes of this. After that, as you know, COVID-19 hits, so the consultant services that we have with Mr. Lee, which only had included a series of community meetings, but because of the situation, we were not able to do any of the community meetings. So last week or beginning of June, we did an additional, June 4th. Yes, we did an additional Zoom meeting with the same stakeholder group to present all the proposals to them and get their feedback from that. But in reality, the outreach has been very limited. We send mailers anyway from these amendments to all the 500 feet surrounding the properties and all the properties within the amendment. I think at this point, I have received full phone calls. And at the DAC meeting, we have two, one business owner and one representative from a committee organization attended the DAC meeting and expressed their support. But the realities has been limited due to the situation.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions of board members?
Yeah, I have a question. It's sort of a two-part question. So I've cut out at certain points because of the way, you know, the video conferencing works. I presume that this is all gonna take place over a multi-year timeframe, right? Do you have an idea of how many years this would all take place over?
Well, what we're doing is just adjusting the zoning regulations that allow the development. Then the private investors and property owners are the ones who have to bring the projects in. So we really don't have control over that. The only thing that we know at this point is there is one particular developer that is interested in developing the block between Third and Second, Sappidilla and Rosemary. That's the only one that we have a real interest right now. But again, it's only outside our control to see if they will come in or not. So we're on the way with this.
Well, I guess my question might be a little different than that. It's just, conceptually, as you put together a plan like this, it's useful over a period of time, right? Five years, 10 years? Is that, is that the period of time that this would be? Would that be the useful life of a plan like this, five or 10 years?
I would say at least 10 years, Anna, I would suggest, and to...
Yeah, yeah.
Suggested, we also have the hinge block. We're still in discussions with the Indigo Hotel, as David and Larry mentioned, and then again, the Flagler Station moved last Wednesday. And then, of course, the grand will be submitting if these changes get approved. So we could have three viable projects here. But I would say this plan is probably valid for at least 10 years. And certainly, we always come back with the older plans and tweak them.
That's a great answer, and it was, it is, I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but you don't... That's a great answer, and it, and it was, it is, I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but you don't surprise me that that's what, that's what you're thinking. So let, here's the second part of the question, okay? But there was, there was all, there, there were some really wonderful renderings and, and, and just to characterize them in a very simple way. Low, medium, high. And I, you know, that there were sort of low parts, medium parts and high parts. As this fills in over the next five to ten years, here's really the gist of my question. And, and you think about the marketplace, you think about how developers, you know, want to make money, you know, the more profitable elements of, or opportunities, right? In this map. What, where, what do you think will be the hard part? Will it be the getting, in getting people to build lower projects because they don't have as much F R? And so they can't make as much money? Or the medium projects or the hot projects? I mean, as, as, as you think about, about the, the, the real development appetite out there for, for, for the different parts of the map. Where do you think the, you know, the difficult sell is going to be?
That's a good question. I think it's also part on location. We had the incentive along Bunyan Boulevard. It was a very generous incentive, hoping a new development will come. But has not, except for the one Flagler Station project that is now being approved on the corner of Tamarin and Bunyan. So I think there are different things that play. We, I think Mr. Lee did a, an effort to propose regulations or propose heights and massing that. In addition to be compatible with the neighborhood, there were enough development capacity to make the projects viable. So we're hoping the regulation, it, it's an economic, it makes economic sense. And the developers are interested in, in developing those sites. Mr. Lee, do you have anything else to add in there?
I have any.
Do you have anything else to add to that?
Oh, to add to that, well, I tell you, I wish I knew. I think we're all trying to figure this one out in terms of where people are going to go. I do think there'll probably be interest in some of the lower scale projects, just because. I think people are going to be more interested in living in less dense environments for a while before they start getting back on elevators. So it may turn out that some of, at, at least they'll couple the two. That they'll take some of the lower F R, but they'll also take advantage of the opportunities to build on some of the sites that are more modest in terms of development capacity. Larry, you have any thoughts about that?
Just, just one, one brief thought. This applies, as, as the city is now seeing to that block between Sapdilla, Rosemary, Second and Third, the hinge. I'm sorry, the Grand project and the incentive districts along the west side of Rosemary. The Grand had to assemble a number of small parcels to make his current proposal work. Some of that same kind of thing will have to happen up on Rosemary, because many of the parcels on Rosemary are small. And some of the three dimensional build out illustrations you saw does require that some properties be combined and assembled. So that will always be a question as well, in terms of how fast things can happen. Hopefully, we've provided enough, allow density that people will assemble small properties.
Thank you for those thoughtful answers. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or the consultants?
Yeah, I have a question. When you had the stakeholder meeting, what was the percentage of, of interested developers? More than likely larger than the community participants.
When we did the stakeholder meeting, it was a very targeted meeting, so it was only with residents of the neighborhood or business owners. There were like a few members, but there were no developers in the, in the meeting. It was only property owners, small property owners.
I think one thing, though, the property owners who were there were interested in what their potential was in terms of opportunities developed. Whether in partnership with someone else or on their own. They were anxious that they, not anxious, but they were. Interested to know if they would have the same capacity to develop as people coming from outside the neighborhood. So they wanted to be, they wanted to respect the scale transition to the historic district. But they wanted to make sure that should there be community people interested in development, that the opportunities were there for them to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Todd, go ahead.
When you put up the future right of way map and talked about the flexibility of future potential just pedestrian rights of way. Is that, those dash lines, they could be road, full vehicle and pedestrian right of way? Or they could be just pedestrian and would that decision be made by the staff when those areas redevelop?
Yes, the idea was to allow the flexibility depending of the circumstances. We could have pedestrian passageways when it was appropriate. Like is, is the intention with the extension of Douglas into Bunyan Boulevard. Was considered that the connectivity to the neighborhood was achieved enough with the passageway. And it was not necessary to have a full road. When it was close to intersection to Bunyan and Tamarin, so it was a little bit more problematic in terms of, of traffic. But also the constructing a full right of way in there will also reduce the size of the lot for development for the project on the corner. And impact their possibility to develop. So the idea was to provide some alternatives to provide the connectivity that we're looking, but not necessarily as a vehicular road.
Thank you.
Any other questions of either staff or consultants? And if not, I just want to say to the consultants, I think it was a very thoughtful and persuasive presentation. We thank you for your work on this.
Well, you guys have a good staff down there. You don't have good projects without good clients.
Can I check now how we hope, have we any public comments of any kind?
Mr. Chair, we do have a couple people in the Flagler Gallery who will be speaking.
Okay, terrific.
If we can just get them set up, just give me one second.
Of course.
Should I just think to start with? Hi, good evening. My name's Nick Rojo. I'm a, one of the owners of affiliated development. We're developing the Grand on Third and Rosemary. And, you know, thanks, guys, thanks for your time tonight. We're very excited to move forward with this project. And, you know, we clocked over a hundred meetings within the community. You know, showing people the project and received a tremendous amount of support locally. So, you know, I asked you vote on, you know, yes on this. And I look forward to delivering a great project that I think is gonna, you know, revitalize, help revitalize the community and provide a lot of opportunity for people locally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just one more.
Can you, can you please state your name for the record?
Okay, how are you? Darren Stutstil, City Side Suites, Third and Rosemary. Want, want to say good, good afternoon to everybody. Appreciate everything you do. I'm here to support the incentive, the new incentive district. I'm a third generation entrepreneur. And we're excited about the opportunity of having new development and possible disposable income in the neighborhood. Being a small minority business is just vital, vital to get people on the street to come in and explore the true, true nature of that great district of the Northwest. We're excited. At the same time, we are encouraged to be a part of the process also as this neighborhood grows. So I just want to thank you for the time you're coming and I ought to say thank you.
We thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, John, anyone else from the public?
No, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Okay, at this point, then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Is, is, does anyone have any concerns about the applications before us?
No.
If not, I mean. I'll look for a motion.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman of, of case number eighteen fifty eight. Do we have to read the entire text or?
Miss, is Mr. Thomaster with us? Yes, you are, sir. It's a, it's like a tic-tac board here. I'm trying to find everyone. Sam, what's your recommendation for how we treat this?
I can put up a motion page if you want. That will be easier.
Like the one from DAC?
Yes, this one. Yes.
Okay, okay. So you want me to read the text or?
Yes, please.
Alright, based on the findings and data and analysis presented in the staff report. And based on the findings that the amendment meets the requirements of chapter one sixty three from the Florida statute. And is consistent with other elements of the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay, that's the motion for approval. Have we a second?
Second.
Alright, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Does anyone oppose this motion? It passes unanimously. Mr. Pifco, will you make the second motion?
Sure, I'll move approval for case number eighteen fifty eight A. Based on the factual testimony presented, the staff report and the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all of the amendment standards. Founds in section ninety four dash thirty two of the zoning and land development regulations.
Have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Anna Marie, could you please end the screen share? Thank you so much. Alright, at this point, we just move to other business, unfinished business, new business. Does anyone have anything else to bring up? If not, we'll stand, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Aye, thank you.